Staff is requesting the city council ratify the proclamation declaring the existence of a local emergency pursuant to government code section 8630 and California City Municipal Code section 2 dash 2 dot 504. The analysis. Government code section 8558 defines a local emergency as a duly proclaimed existence of conditions of disaster or of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property within the territorial limits of the county, city, and county or city caused by conditions such as air pollution, fire, flood, storm, epidemic, riot, drought, or other conditions other than conditions resulting from labor controversy which are or are likely to be beyond the control of the services, personnel, equipment, and facilities of that political subdivision and require the combined forces of other political subdivisions to combat. Under government code section 8630, the city council can proclaim the existence of a local emergency. Under California City Municipal Code, CMNC, section 6 dash 6A1, the chief of police as a director of emergency services as designated by the city manager can also proclaim the existence of a local emergency. Once the existence of a local emergency is proclaimed, neighboring jurisdictions and the state have the power to provide mutual aid to address the emergency conditions. Pursuant to the government code section 8630, once proclaimed, the city council is required to review the need for continuing the local emergency at least every 60 days until the local emergency is terminated and must proclaim the termination of the local emergency at the earliest possible date that conditions warrant. Currently, the governor has suspended the 60-day review requirement. Accordingly, on March 17th, 2020, the chief of police as the city's director of emergency services declared a local emergency as authorized by government code section 8630 and California City Municipal Code section 2 dash 2 dot 504. The proclamation will enable the city to more effectively respond to potential outbreak, put in place a framework that supports the continuity of essential public safety services, seek and utilize mutual aid, potentially obtain reimbursement for expenses incurred to address the pandemic, and ensure the city has all available tools at its disposal to keep the community safe. City council needs to ratify the proclamation and the need for continuing the local emergency that will be reviewed every 60 days or as otherwise required by state law. This may require calling one or more special meetings in the near future. The fiscal review. The primary costs that would be incurred by the city are for administrative support staff in the coordination, surveillance, communication, and management of the COVID-19 local emergency as well as related services and supplies. Current city costs are being covered by existing department appropriations but will be tracked separately. Staff will pursue federal and state reimbursement for all city costs incurred. The local review. The city's attorney's office has reviewed and approved the proposed proclamation and this report as to form. Staff recommends that city council adopt the declaring and existence of a local emergency.
So this is the, the deck or the call for the emergency was from our chief, correct?
Yes, from public safety.
From, from public safety, so that would be the police, the fire. Can you, can we get them on microphone please?
While I'm getting the mic, I can let you know some measures that the city has taken thus far. Over the weekend, we did, we've closed the senior center. We've stopped activities at the Strata Center, basketball hall, et cetera. The park is open for individuals to come in and out in small gatherings. Meals are available from Kern County, but they're being picked up by the truck outside of the senior center and meals on wheels are still being delivered. Desert Jade has limited all access to common areas except for the laundry room, so they can still do that. And we're doing our best at city hall. We've asked people to come in on a scheduled basis if they can make appointments to do so, to drop off their payments if they can, pay online, and also no water will be disconnected during this time. So that's, that's what we've done so far.
Chief Kosek, yeah. Chief Kosek, can you get a little bit on this subject?
So far, as the city manager has explained, in order to stop the spread, you know, we're limiting a lot of our administrative services, contact with the public as best we can so their first responders can remain healthy and respond to individuals as they need to. With the spread of the virus, we are still recommending that everybody follow CDC guidelines as well as the same as Kern County Public Health, which is social distancing, good hygiene as far as washing your hands for at least 20 seconds without at least soap and water. Purell and things like that won't work, but soap and water is best. And also not to panic. We definitely want to limit the spread of the virus to the very young, to people with compromised immune systems, and those who may be elderly with also a decreased ability to fight infection and virus. So limiting this spread is the best, to keep social distancing, stay away from senior centers, other areas where those people might congregate or might have impact too. With that, we are still business as usual as our department, but we do ask if you do have any symptoms of this virus, flu, lacerable or otherwise, please contact your healthcare provider first and seek guidance. It would be best to tell you if you should stay home, shelter in place, do self-isolation, or if you should seek medical help. But in the event that you're unable to contact your healthcare provider, do still call 911. The Kern County Dispatch Center is triaging calls. They are going through a lot of questioning to determine what is going on with their symptoms and how we should respond. We will come individually and determine if transport is needed if this is desired and take them to emergency services such as the hospital or wherever is designated at this time. We are keeping close ties with Kern County Office of Emergency Services, one to make sure that we get reimbursements for any costs that might occur because of this. So if we have to buy extra supplies, we will be submitting our costs to OES for Kern County so we can submit that up the chain to the state and FEMA to get more funding, reimbursements, and more supplies. So even though a lot of these supplies are limited, especially with administrative services, we've given out lots of our supplies that we have on hand, but we are also a little shorthanded on supplies as it's all being backward. So at this point, that's about what we know. We're sticking with the facts, which is make sure you go to the CDC website or the Royal Town Organization website, make sure you read their recommendations. We'll continue to post those as we get any updates on our Facebook website, city website, and make sure that those recommendations are out to the public as best as we can. Also with continued reminder of updates of the same social distancing, hand washing, good hygiene, anything else that may come up with the statistics. Is there anything else I can answer for you?
Just has your call volume increased since?
We're, we're still, we're experiencing still quite a few calls, so we are getting a lot of calls that come in as suspect. So we'd like to remind the public, if you see us out in the field, you will see us typically with masks, gloves, eye protection, sometimes even isolation gowns. That's for our own protection so we don't spread it to each other. That shouldn't incur panic because we give out every call that has any sort of cold flu-like symptoms, they go with that. So typically where we may not is where we have just a weather balloon injury, things like cardiac problems, but anything that presents anything close to that, we're taking full protective measures from personnel. So no need to feel more anxiety if you see that. They may not be infected with that, but that's going to be our protocol for all our personnel in all emergencies, prevention. So we're basically doing preventative for us as best we can with the contamination, just in the event to be proactive.
Chief, how, Laura, how about your response?
Basically, Chief Kosek turned me off here. Basically, the stance we're taking is right in line with the county sheriffs. We are responding to emergency life-threatening calls, obviously. There was a rumor out there that we were not responding to non-emergency calls, but that is in fact not true. We will respond. We do have our dispatchers doing a little bit extra screening to make sure if maybe it's something we can take with a phone, stolen car report, something like that. We can still take the report with a phone. If it's happened within the last hour, we can still send an officer in the area, but we're going to try to avoid any kind of personal contact if we can, making sure my officers know when, when it, when they can to maintain their distance. So, you know, we don't need to go hands-on. We canceled some big events. Everybody knows the circus got canceled. Bequinox has been canceled. The Holes and Ladder, excuse me, and Duro has been canceled. So, excuse me, now I'm coughing. We're, we're just trying to keep the same protocol in line with the county sheriffs. So that's where we're at. Our lobby remains open, but I'm going to try to stop coughing. I'm going to try to get that sanitized because we do have the glass in between the people and records and the lobby. It's pretty safe, but I'd like to try to keep the lobby as sanitized as possible. Any other questions?
Yeah. That's one question I had about our lobby. How are we going to sanitize?
Mayor, depending on those supplies we have on hand, you know, Lysol wipes do work. They do recommend if it's high traffic, do hourly wipe downs with all surfaces, especially things that are touched on a regular basis such as door handles, doorknobs, anywhere where people are going to place their hands, you know, horizontal surfaces such as counters if they have to be used to regularly hourly disinfect those. Being that those things are short in supply, the one thing you can use is if you have bleach, you know, you can use a one to 10 solution or a one to nine solution. So one part bleach to eight or nine cups of, or parts of water, you can make that disinfect solution and use that if there's a lack of like the other wipes that you can use, the Lysol type wipes. And that'll be the best for now. And also, I believe CDC is recommending the same. If we see any updates for that, we'll send it out to staff as well as the public for those recommendations.
As far as our staff that's taking money at the main windows there, would it be recommended, chief, that they wear gloves and handling all monies?
Yes. Anything that you're going to come in contact with, we recommend they wear gloves, but also to be mindful, and we have talked to staff about this, is when you're wearing gloves, sometimes you forget your hands are safe, but you need to be cognizant of that you are wearing gloves and touching on the surfaces and going elsewhere to make sure that they stay stationary, that they regularly wipe down their workstations because as they're taking paperwork and or money, those things could have a virus on there and they could stay there, you know, go, you know, into their work areas. So as people are working, staff should, that are interacting with the public, taking items, they should stay somewhat isolated throughout the day as fast as possible. If they leave their workstation, make sure they remove their gloves. Anything else that may have anything that's contaminated, throw in the trash, have a separate trash can for the half trash bag so they can put those items in there so it can be thrown away, decontaminated properly, and then clean their workstation and go off and do other things and come back. Repeat those same processes. It can be very tedious, but it is important that you don't get complacent with the safety measures like gloves and masks. Even with a mask, if it's not properly fitted to your face, you have gaps in there and it's not perfectly sealed, you can still breathe it in even like you have. It's better than nothing, but if you don't use your PPE properly, your protective equipment, it really doesn't do you much good. So we can work with staff even before we leave tonight, how to properly take off your gloves so you're not recontaminating yourself, your hands. We'll all be happy to stay and show any staff who would like to see this and train them how to properly don and remove their protective equipment.
Does that also include our, our employees in planning and building when people are bringing in big rolls of plans?
Yeah, it really should. It's, I don't have any absolute data on how long the virus lasts outside the body. I think it's really dependent on the environment as far as the heat, temperature, if it's cold or hot, moisture in the air. So I don't know exactly how long after various different things. Trying to get a little better idea on that, but I would just go on the be suspect of everything. If we can delay taking that stuff for now, might be the best course of action, so we can limit that. If plans can wait for two or three weeks, I recommend that the least amount of exposure will be best and you don't really have to worry about that. Because it is going to be very difficult to take plans. So the same things are still going to apply. Close contact, taking plans, having gloves on, those same issues are going to go to anybody who interacts with the public in any way, share the form. One of the ones that may not affect as much are people who might be working in the back that don't have regular contact, you know, maybe like finance or something, but not dealing with other people, they stay able to be isolated and make sure their workstation still stays clean and make sure that people don't bring stuff into their work areas. Would be my suggestion.
Just on the proclamation. Do I have those staff? Does that have any questions? Good morning. Yes, ma'am.
So through the clerk listserv where we basically see what everybody else is doing, that's pretty much just on all subjects, but of course today this was a hot topic. I'm trying to be a little bit more prepared, but I'm going to say probably 60 cities have responded as far as what their precautions are, and I'm going to say probably at least 85% are handling all things through city hall, either by email. They're, they're closed to the public as far as them coming in and using other measures. So that is the majority of the people at this time that the city hall is not open to the public, that the people are still working. They're still working there, but the public is not coming in. They're taking their information by email, by phone, all that, you know, this stuff that can't be done. I have that list if anyone's interested.
Do we have any contact, do we have any contact with the public? Yes.
I have, I have, I've had several calls. I've had several calls come in. There's obviously a concern, a little bit of panic, trying to calm them down. We're doing everything we can. There's only one case in Kern County so far. Some people have been, you know, to the extreme that they want us to stop all new OHB permits because we don't know where they're coming from. They're taking our, our, they're cleaning out our shelves in the stores, but we can't, we really have no way of limiting who comes in and out of our city. A lot of our developers are from LA or out of state. So we currently have same concerns, but I think we've all heard, what are we going to do? Are we going to close? Is there a quarantine? Will riots still be open? Can we still go to the restaurants? And right now, it's just a recommendation, strong recommendation that restaurants, if they can, do orders and delivery, pick up and delivery. But at this time, there's really no answer we can give them. There's not a mandate to close things or to, to limit OHB at this time. Do you guys have any comments on that?
Well, specifically, I think probably everybody in this town, as much as we try to shop locally, we take advantage of businesses Lancaster, Rosemont, Tehachapi, and, so I think there's kind of a fear that all of our, all of our stuff is being taken. Well, folks in Tehachapi probably would, would say the same way about us and Lancaster and for our, our staff that lives in Tehachapi, I hope they don't try to block the road so we can't go up there to, to, to get. So, but I think some of those fears are, are pretty unfounded. It's a big desert out there, so for the, the social distancing, they're doing a pretty good job of social distancing themselves out in the desert. So I don't think that really has to be a fear that we have. I think as Denise brought up, I would, I would suggest that that's a city manager issue in regards to how you're going to, to conduct business that goes on in this place. As has been stated that we like to get down in the weeds too much, that would be pretty weedy for us to, in a few moments, try to determine this is how we will handle the public. I think that, that would be your, that would be your purview. My questions would be specifically on the worrying on the proclamation. And so when we get to that.
Sean?
Yes.
Have we had any questions brought up?
Yeah, we have one. Do you want me to ask it now?
Yeah, just.
Yeah, just.
We have one from the chat on YouTube. Um, they want to know if there's a possibility, uh, if you would consider suspending the water payments. Gee's burdens on people financially. They're requesting one month.
That's, that will be up to, up to your call.
That's been determined if there's hardship that we're not going to be, we're going to be in line with SCE and SoCal Gas, we're not going to suspend, um, water services at this time. They will have to, they'll also owe that bill.
Yes.
It's not going to be a, a forgiveness by any means, but if they can't make it in to pay that or if they're self-quarantined, then we're going to be making exceptions in that area.
So it'll be a case by case.
Case by case.
And so we're not going to have, uh, late fees?
No.
We're not going to be shutting off anybody's water?
We will not be shutting off any water at this time.
Mayor, it appeared that staff wanted to come forward.
Well, there was no microphone.
Yeah.
Ready for that?
Yes. Also, real quick, if, if people can keep their, uh, mouth like six inches from the microphone, you know, sound better on Granicus.
I broke it, sir. Um, I just have one question. It's inevitably going to happen, people are going to panic. Are police patrols going to be stepped up?
Stepped up, uh, not as far as deployment, but I'm anticipating more calls for some.
Gee, we can hang up for a second.
Um, we have no intention of, uh, of re-deployment at this time just because of, uh, my lack of resources. However, I do anticipate, um, the call load increasing, but it hasn't yet. Let's answer that. And if I could, real quick, um, we, we touched on it about OHB. I did talk to NJ and, uh, all the big organized events will be canceled. However, um, Morax Bill's and camping out in the desert and motorcycle riding is still open. As of now, that's where we're getting a lot of calls on that. So just to be clear.
So the, the, the everyday weekend riding and that will be open to any big events?
Correct. At this point, at this point, that's still available. And that's what we're informing people that give us those calls.
Mr. Mayor, a question for both of our chiefs. Do either, uh, either Chief Kolsick or, um, Chief Walker, do you have any issues with what's going on with people using, utilizing OHB right now as it's being used? Any, see any safety or health issues with that?
I personally don't, um, because of, again, the social distance and they're out in the middle of the desert and they're in the open air. I think at this point it's not, it's not, um, a problem. I don't know how, uh, Chief Kolsick feels about that.
Currently not a problem. I would probably just put notices at Morax Bill, just encouraging the same behavior of social distancing, you know, stick to your family unit if you're going out there for single rider, just stick to yourself, put those notices as a reminder so that they're not getting large groups of people congregating together. Uh, just as a standard reminder from there, but otherwise I don't see, it's probably a safer place to be than most places, um, as long as they're sticking to that social distancing.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is our fire department stacking rubber gloves and mask efficiently to handle this? Or, you know, I mean, I know you guys have them, but just in case, are you?
We do, we do have a supply at this point. We do have more on order, but we are, we did hand out quite a bit to staff here initially when this first came in, uh, when it very first started. That was a recommendation from Public Health, uh, before really, you know, many, many weeks ago. Uh, but we are a little bit stretched then, so we have given out really what we can. Reserve, we're reserving everything else for us specifically to deal with patients. So while we have enough for now, we're still working, uh, with, oh yes, another services to get more in, but, um, we can't really give anything out other than what we have at the station that we've already done. So right now we're okay, but I can't speak if, you know, the column light rises and people actually do come down with it. Uh, but we will be looking at resources to get masks and gloves in for us and by proxy as the best we can for staff and everybody else who uses it.
Thank you.
So maybe we could possibly hit the county for some stuff, correct?
Uh, possibly in the future, but right now, everybody else is in the same boho because everybody who has ordered supplies, they come from, you know, specific manufacturers, they're, everybody's on backward, especially for the N95 mask. So we are still waiting for stuff in, trying to prioritize that. I know at the federal level, they are also trying to redirect masks mostly to hospitals because they're the ones who are going to be more closely with those patients for longer periods of time. Uh, but we are diligently working and keeping, uh, close ties with all the agencies, um, if we do start to get low, but we do have options to get more so you can continue responding to calls, treating patients and transporting them.
Mayor? I'm not sure if, um, I, to be honest, for city hall and I think that'll be employees that are here, unfortunately, we do not have a supply of anything. We don't have, we don't have a supply of wipes that we should be wiping down the counters and we don't have the gloves other than, you know, the fire departments are gracious enough to do. But unfortunately, hand sanitizer, unfortunately, that's, you can't find that anywhere for us personally, let alone here, but, but, you know, city hall wasn't, you know, we don't have those things readily available and we don't at this time.
Uh, for, for now, I would suggest soap and water. So if we do have supplies, uh, if we have extra like at PD or, um, even at the fire station, if city hall is low on this, where people are still going to be working, we will send you what we can. Uh, again, hand sanitizer is nice, but just simple hand washing. Again, like I was telling staff today, um, soap still works just as well, 20 seconds of hand washing. Uh, the big thing that really does the job is the mechanical scrubbing of your hands by rubbing your hands back and forth, not forgetting your fingertips. That is what kills most viruses and bacteria, not the soap itself. The soap acts as a medium so that you can basically scrub better to kill the things that are on your hands. So with that, soap and water works good. If you do not have the wipes like we talked about, Lysol wipes and things, uh, if we do have supplies of bleach, you can get a spray bottle, you can dilute it to a solution where you can still clean with, uh, paper towels and whatnot and still do the job.
So Mayor, I brought in a hundred, uh, surgical gloves, large. I have more, uh, I have gallons of bleach that I can bring in if you, for the surfaces. But other than that, I don't have a wipe saver, but I do have a lot of gloves. I have a lot of bleach.
Yeah, and all those will be extremely helpful, uh, if, if we have to have those. But I think, you know, the more there'll be limits, people having to work if it's possible, then we will extend our stock of gloves and everything else over the long term for the actual need. Because if people are changing gloves multiple times per day as they should during contacts, you know, you're going to start burning through a lot of the supplies very rapidly and they really should change them often because as we change everything for every single person we come in contact with each time and sometimes multiple times for a patient depending on what's going on.
All right, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, uh, if I could ask this question, we have, um, 13, 14 employees, not counting our, uh, our chiefs that are here. Would it be appropriate to take a poll, do, do they, um, are they concerned about coming into work? It may help our, it may help our city manager to be able to make determinations. Would that be appropriate?
I don't know, yeah, I, I don't know if it would be, but I'd like to know that information. How many of, of there are concerned? It's rather obvious. Yes, ma'am.
And then there's another level, um, even if they're able to come in, they, some have daycare providers that are self-quar, self-quarantine themselves, or how do you say it? Um, doing self-quarantine, so they're going to have to take family leave to, um, watch their children. We are separating, uh, anything that's paid out, whether it's to plan and commission, parks and rec, um, employees that have to take that time off. We will sep- separately code it so that when it's time to get reimbursement, we'll get that back, but it will initially come from, from us. But yeah, there, there, there has been a lot of fear here. I think my office has been full all day. Um, primarily the unknown because people just don't know what to do, but, um, and we don't have the answers for them. So if they would like to speak, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Come on up, come on up, come on up. Don't.
This is it, Sean.
Real quick.
I mean, just from at least planning's perspective, we talked about this a little bit, but it's not necessarily coming to city hall, it's dealing with the public at the windows.
Exactly.
Because, you know, we don't know what they're bringing in. We, um, we can keep ourselves distanced from each other, coworkers, but, you know, we have to service the windows and it's kind of hard when you're, you know, taking away some stuff, so.
While they're coming up, in the event that they work from home, we bet everybody has a log man access to phone calls and emails, um, they can, so a lot of people can do work from home, but.
And I think, I don't know if I'm speaking for a lot of people, but I think most of us are comfortable coming to work like Sean was saying, but some of the cities that just closed city halls to the public, I, I feel that would probably be the best option for those of us that don't have to deal with daycare.
Um, I'm one of those people that have to deal with daycare, so I think that's one of my main concerns. Um, as far as protecting ourselves, we're taking every measure that we should take. I think that's my only concern at the moment. Um, there's a lot of people that, you know, have to go through that, but, um, yeah.
Anybody else? Don't be afraid. We're here to, we're here to solve a problem, folks. That's what we're here to do. You got any questions, they'll come up and ask us. Please, we don't fight. We'll maintain the six feet. I kind of trip and fall on the wall at times.
Yeah, we, we have a lot of concern with the, uh, you know, dealing with people coming in from the outside and not, we don't have a designated person like most places to actually come in and scrub the areas that the public has touched in, like the door handles, the countertops. So that being said, maybe we don't have the key supplies to do it, so that's, that's what our concern is.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for HR. Have you had, uh, have people been coming into your office asking?
Uh, being childcare, scared of these kids being in.
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
I've had people come and ask what, what the plans are. If, um, the schools are shut downs this week was pre-planned for spring break, but the week to come, they're not really sure what they're going to do. Um, so they haven't asked what our plans are. Right now, um, we've, um, you know, it's changing day to day, what I've said.
Anybody else? Are there any other questions, Sean, from, Sean?
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, we had one, one more from the chat. Uh, they, they would like to know since Gavin or Governor Newsom has allowed cities to, uh, make the decision on evictions, they were wondering if you could address that. Um, specifically if you're going to allow.
Right now, I don't believe that we're going to do that.
Address it or allow it? Sorry, just.
Allow it right now. That's, that, that would be the same, that would be the same as, oh, you didn't pay your water bill. Sorry, you're, you're confined to your house, we're going to shut you down. No.
Yeah, okay.
We're, this, we're, we're dealing with, with human beings here.
Right. Doesn't, doesn't the, the sheriff usually get involved in this?
Sheriff usually does.
I think that as far as the city is concerned, we have no relationship to the activity in the first place.
Okay.
Unless, unless they're, they're property that we control, but even still then we, we go through the sheriff's.
So that, yeah.
We're talking about domiciles. We have, we don't have, that, that doesn't affect, that doesn't affect anything the city does.
But the cities have the power to stop evictions right now.
No, no, as far as that, no, because that is, that is a tort and that is something that deals with the courts.
Okay. So you won't make that?
Yeah. Anybody else? Bring it up here. Anybody have anything, sir?
Yeah, just, city hall is going to say open, correct?
That's what we're deciding now, yeah. We don't.
With people coming in and out, I would suggest you put a hand or stay outside. You can't get them, huh? You can't get them.
Everybody's snatched them up. Okay.
Coming out of handle of the door, I mean, it could spread anywhere.
So absolutely.
You know, if, if, you know, remain open, there should be some precaution outside.
If we can get the door, if we can get the door panel placed on the outside so they can just elbow it and open it automatically, open up the one side of the door. Because that's down. And anything else, sir? I, I, I see where you're coming from. Anything else? Sir?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed just with the, uh, employees coming up using a microphone, our chiefs sharing the microphone, uh, germs being passed and forth, uh, Dr. Carson got hammered for coughing into his hand, moving the mic, putting his hands on stuff. So when we talk about surface, uh, just with, I'm not criticizing, just making an observation, hands were all over, even with our chiefs. Um, Chief Kolsick probably, um, he seemed to turn a couple of shades. Uh, blood left his face a little bit when, um, when our police chief coughed a couple of times and, um, Mr. Varigan was ready to dive out the window. Um, but, um, it, it's kind of hard when we're told not to touch our face. My face has been itching since I was told that. I want to touch it. And the more I see just not touching the, the microphone surface, um, it is a, it is an issue for us. But specifically on the proclamation, um, this is what, what we're being asked. And, and, um, I, I'm not criticizing for the amount of time we've had. This was an emergency meeting, henceforth this emergency meeting, but we really haven't had much opportunity to be able to read what we're about to sign and make a proclamation. And the first, the first thing that, that grabbed my attention, um, uh, was under the analysis, um, the first paragraph under analysis, the no page number, um, but the phrase extreme peril. Um, um, that's a pretty strong term and depending upon what has been shared with the World Health Organization, um, uh, that, that's a pretty strong term for us to use. And then jumping over to, on the proclamation itself, on, um, uh, page four, this is very concerning to me. Uh, on page four of five, under E, that the City of California City orders that within the boundaries of the City of California City, the public health experts' recommendations shall be deemed mandatory. And, um, uh, I don't feel comfortable, number one, who, who are the public health experts that we will be using the recommendations? Because even if it was stated already, the public health experts disagree. So that's concerning to me, but, um, uh, to, to deem this mandatory, that's pretty strong for our community. I think we want to elicit, elicit panic. Um, that statement is kind of, um, kind of goes against, uh, the, the principles that, um, that we threw some tea in Boston Harbor for many years ago. So I, I'm concerned about that statement, um, since our police chief would be the one who, um, if this, if this passes, that will be making mandatory things. Do you have anything in mind already that you would want to do?
Not at this point. I, 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 I think it would be, I think it would be situation driven, obviously. If it, it continued to get worse or if we had, um, any kind of, um, no cases in California City, I think we probably would want to consider at least going to the next level and maybe closing businesses and things like that. But right now I, I, I don't see, um, any need for that at this point.
Yeah, the mayor wants to come in. Are you speaking about public, public, uh, private businesses?
Correct.
Yeah, and churches and.
I think that would obviously, I, I think that would be the obvious next step. I think that would be the obvious next step in the event that that was to happen. I don't foresee that happening, but I think that would be the next...
Mayor?
I am, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I understand the question to be about who is the public health official determining the resolution? And just to address the provisions about those public health official orders being mandatory, is that accurate?
Yes.
Yes, E on page four of five.
Okay. So for purposes of this, what we're doing tonight, there's a very specific section for us to put in place that's determination of a local emergency. Obviously, the main purpose here is so that we can reimburse our expenses where we're doing. The specific public health official being referred to is actually the current county public health official. So there is a very specific person who that is referring to, and that's by state law. And of course, the public health official is operating and making his decision, you know, underneath both governor's orders as well as the CDC and the World Health Organization. In regard to being mandatory, I mean, the council could soften that language up, but just so you know, there are very specific provisions in the law under both the Health and Safety Code and the Government Code, which give authority to the police department to implement orders from the public health official. And it specifically gives them authority when we're dealing with a contagious disease or a pandemic. And also, there are provisions under both the Health and Safety Code and the Government Code, which says that it's a misdemeanor to violate those orders. So I believe the city's on the safest ground by, you know, basically going along with what the public health official is ordering and saying, and saying, yes, well, you know, what are you telling people is mandatory? Ultimately, it's going to be followed on the police department or the sheriff to enforce if an issue comes up. I believe in most cases, people are voluntarily cooperating. But I hope that addresses your question, Councilmember.
Yes, it does, and it gives me all the more reason to want to see this softened. You use the term misdemeanor. I don't want to see us make criminals.
Six feet. Was he six feet? As you were rolling.
Thank you, sir. I try to. But I don't want to see us make criminals, this is better? This is better? I don't want to see us make criminals out of people because they have gone to a restaurant, because they have gone to a study, because they have met with a group of folks for whatever reason. I would like to see E that deemed mandatory, I would like to see that softened.
Could we say deemed necessary? Or what was like there?
Because right now, I can...
Council has discretion to change our language. I do understand the state has ordered half-capacity in restaurants, you know, a lot of good pick out. My lack of understanding, but the council has discretion to change that.
Okay. The one thing that they are doing up in the Bay Area, six counties are involved, I think, where they are now making certain things mandatory with subject to being charged criminally. You know, I don't have heart room with it saying shall be deemed...
Necessary.
Necessary. I'm happy with that, but we definitely need to get some information out and educate people that if you truly don't need to be out, don't be. That's all this is about. This is just to restrict your exposure for you and your family. That's all this is about.
That's not what this is about.
No.
That may be what we're being told by people that are higher up in pay grade than us, but what we're here today to do, according to this Kern County proclamation of local emergency, is this declaration enables the county to more effectively respond to the outbreak, seek and utilize mutual aid, potentially obtain reimbursement, and ensure that the county's public health professionals and providers have all necessary personal protective equipment to provide quality care and keep our community safe. I don't see anything in there that says that we're going to get in the business of locking up doors, or telling people how to tie their shoes, or what surface disinfectant they're using to clean their front doors. So, you know, it's these hidden powers that kind of become objectionable, because we don't even know who's going to be creating these standards for us. So I personally appreciate that. But I think as long as we keep ourselves realizing that this is only to maintain a relationship with the state and county emergency services, I think we're in great shape. I think that the whole idea that the more we talk about this, the more it seems scary to everyone who listens. Truly, the people that work the counters here have a wonderful barrier between them and the people coming in to pay with some surface disinfectant, wearing gloves. I think you guys are pretty well covered. City clerk might want to work behind the glass for the next few weeks, not engage people face to face. I don't think you need to be that, you know, I don't think you need to react as deeply in fear as what I'm seeing in the rest of the country. One case in Kern County, and it was a person who traveled into Kern County, it's not a local person. I think we're going to get out of this just fine, and when we get back to life as normal, you know, the question is, how important were all the things that we're learning this week? If we go into planning and say, planning now has to do something special to every document that they take in, does that stop in three weeks when the pandemic ends? In my world, I have to engage in what are called universal precautions. Every person who comes into my office has to be treated as if they have the worst disease on this earth. That's the standard of care that I have to use when I'm doing my work. I, you know, if you've been doing, handling, planning documents for, you know, 40 years in the City Hall, and no one's ever gotten sick from it, you know, I just, don't get really bent out of shape, although, you know, for the time being, you may have to think about it carefully, how that looks. Can documents be presented as a computer file instead? I would imagine so. So, I mean, there may be other ways to make this wheel continue to turn without ratcheting up the spirit lotion. Life will go on.
And I think if I may, I think we're getting a little wrapped up with the language, where obviously, we're not going to go out and break up Bible study, and we're not going to go out and tell people to disperse that are three or four people in a group, but it does give us the power, if in fact, we have to use it, at least we have that power to invoke whatever law we need to invoke. Obviously, with common sense, and it's necessary and reasonable. So I think we're a little too wrapped up in that.
Well, I appreciate that, chief, but in all reality, what our city attorney said, with this being deemed mandatory, if the Kern County public health official makes a recommendation that no more than 10 people gather together, this says this will be deemed mandatory, and that will be a misdemeanor if there's a barbecue with 11 people there.
Agreed, agreed, but a misdemeanor, that's at the discretion of the officer that informs that. So with common sense, again, necessity and reasonableness.
Okay. Well, I would recommend that we would pass this if we strike E, E in its entirety, and if need be, this has to be addressed, then E can be added back on, but I think at this time, this is way premature. So I would recommend we would pass this, but if we would strike E in its entirety, and we can come back to that a later date. We had an emergency meeting today to last minute, we can address this again.
Make that a motion.
I make that motion that we would pass the proclamation number 2020-01, with the striking of E on page four or five in its entirety.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion first by Councilman R.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Mayor? I believe you called the proclamation, and I believe you'll be adopting a resolution which is ratifying the proclamation, just as a technical clarification.
I'll amend my motion with the proper legalese for resolution.
For resolution to, in reference to the proclamation.
Is that right?
That's fine, yeah.
And you're good with that, sir? Absolutely. Okay, we have a first by R. Smith, and second by Councilman Lucenovich. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilwoman Lucenovich?
Aye.
Smith R.?
Aye.
Smith W.?
Yes.
Mayor Pro temperez?
Yes.
Mayor McGuire?
Yes.
Okay, that being done, ladies and gentlemen, let me hang on for a second, let me make sure I'm following. I'm having a bigger buzzer for you, I'm sure that's... For a second, see if there's anything else on this. Okay, so it'd be one, we're looking at German as far as I know, there's going to be...
Yep. Yep, unless something drastic happens, yeah. Of course, it's...
Very good. Okay, so looking for a motion. I'll make that motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody, for calling in and being here.
Denise?